Writing up a new code under Title VIII and then adding it to U-MOT. And the Alaska Court system is pretty easy to work with. They usually provide feedback within the same day and it's added.
Any other questions at this time from the Assembly? Jeff?
I just want to take the opportunity to say I'm interested in us looking at how do we hold individuals accountable. I understand the automobile, like I can tell you where there's a vehicle sitting on the side of an embankment with a license plate still on it that's been there now for at least six months that I'm aware of. But I, you know, yesterday went for a walk and, you know, I shared this a while ago that I found a freezer sitting in a stream that feeds a salmon stream. And it's still in that stream. But now joining it is a television set, a hundred-pound propane fuel bottle, and 165-pound home heating oil tank that have been thrown over that same embankment. Now, if I can find somebody to help me, I'm going to go out there and haul that junk out of there myself because it's unacceptable to me. And what I'm more interested in is how do we hold individuals? Because they drove past our landfill to throw this stuff right where they threw it. I want to find a way to, if we can't educate the community to say, "This is unacceptable to treat our home this way," how do we enforce that and have some teeth to it that say enough is enough of this? Because right now, it's hitting what is a large part of our island's livelihood is salmon. And if you're contaminating the stream with the runoff from this stuff, like, that's what I'm interested in seeing us try to rectify throughout this whole process.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I agree with you. Protecting our anadromous streams is extremely important. If that is a popular dumping spot, we can definitely add cameras. And by adding that to the code, if I just pick up a license plate number, I can issue a citation to whoever owns that vehicle, as long as its registration is valid. If I search a vehicle and it's transfer pending, which is about 90% of abandoned vehicles, I can't do anything about it. I think to rectify that situation would be to try and find something with Alaska DMV and speed up the process of their transfer of ownership.
Any other questions or comments? Scott?
In relation to the handout tonight where it says junkyard's industrial and light industrial only, junkyard means any space 100 square feet or more.
That was a separate, that was to go off of something different. It wasn't the same thing as the littering and trash. It was, that's a completely separate part of the handout.
We need to look at the 100 square feet is going to, I know hundreds of people that qualify for that 100 square feet, including myself, in my backyard. But what somebody else thinks is junk is not junk. So that needs to be looked at being changed before we go forward with, I can citations on that.
Absolutely. And that was to go off of the public nuisance and the outdoor storage. And I agree with you completely. The 100 square foot seems a little too much, especially if somebody owns five acres or 10 acres. And people like to recycle parts. We live in a remote island in Alaska, and it's expensive to ship back and forth. And I understand that. And I also understand that if we do it the right way and we go by meeting the manager's concurrence along with it, you know, that it's egregious enough to go after them and not even go after them, just work with them to rectify whoever's complaining about it. Because typically, if I get one complaint about a junkyard house, it's not just one person, it's multiple, and it's a lot of daily correspondence back and forth. And I'm trying to solve it amicably. But it would be nice to say, "Hey, let me help you work on this. I can help you in any way. I can come load something up in my truck if I need to also. But if you don't have this done by, say, two months from now, you're going to have a $300 ticket." Something along those lines. I just, I think holding somebody to a standard instead of using Scott and filing a long district, you know, court complaint, which is going to cost a couple thousand dollars and a lot of my time at court.
Joe?
I'm looking at these options that we have here, and I think I like option three and four. But you brought up something that concerns me as well, is if you have to take these people to court, then it's just going to cost more money, not only them, but us.
Exactly.
Which really doesn't solve the problem. I like the idea of getting together and talking with them, although I think sometimes I'm going to find that they're not going to be able to talk to them. But I think after we do that, and then there's some kind of punitive afterwards that will help. Hopefully, you know, because just today, sometime today after I went to work, our dumpster got full, filled with dresser drawers and then table and part of a dresser. Now it's going to be full by the time I get home tonight, and there's not going to be any room to put trash until it comes and gets unloaded again. So I think that we need to start looking at finding ways to get these people that do this. And getting the license plate, I think, is a good idea, a good start. And hopefully, we can convince these people that it isn't really good for us, that also can affect our taxes, as it's been brought up. We pay too much. But I think that looking at three and four, those two options are certainly look good to me.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what I'm just trying to do. I'm just trying to wrinkle out, iron out the wrinkles of my everyday process and how I go about things. If I get a complaint, I have to hit these objectives and benchmarks to not only please the complaints, but also not step over my bounds with the property owner. Because like I said, it's a small town, and I don't want to cross those lines. And it's just a curve I'm trying to respect and using the tools that I've currently given. But you know, the stuff that I provided, it's just, it's just ironing out the wrinkles of my process that's, I have, you know, that need to be addressed. You know, that's, in my opinion, it's just the same things that occur every day.
So are you guys looking for the Assembly's go-ahead for creating, having the code created? So am I seeing that there is a go-ahead with the code? I'm getting lots of yeses and some blank stares. So we'll go with yes. I think that's your go-ahead to go ahead and have Scott work on those code items, and we look forward to seeing him come back. And I do think it's really important that you have the tools that you need to be able to do your job.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Assembly.
Next thing on our agenda tonight is to discuss the bond debt reimbursement payments received from the state of Alaska. Dave, is there anything new you want to add to that? I know we have version two attached in our packet from the changes that were requested.
The only thing I would add is I know there was conversations last week that there was a fund, so to speak, designated. We do recall after conversation, I do agree with Mr. Arndt, that, yes, indeed, we did discuss funding vehicles in the current year's budget. And there is money. There's money there. There's nothing that says that we can't shift this money later in a budget adjustment, whether we use the money that was designated last week or in this particular item, or if it gets designated, or if we use your contingency that was created to pay for those vehicles. It can be done either way. It's just kind of, you know, playing the shell game, no pun intended. But there is money there. It's in both places. It's just a matter of what we apply, where we take it to apply it to those costs. So that's all I really wanted to clarify. It's, we have the money, it just depends what pot we take it out of.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any further Assembly discussion on this item? Scott?
Like I mentioned last week, ideally, hopefully between now and the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, we can get some of the vehicles, especially the smaller, the smaller ones there. And my whole intent was, you know, and what I'd like to see is instead of setting up a capital account for the, with $560,000, is just take that amount and fold it into general fund at this time. Then work on using the 240, 260 in contingency and get some of those vehicles, and we'll have an idea, and we can appropriate out of fund balance at that time. I just think that would be more appropriate, especially I also disagreed with taking, you know, seven vehicles at $80,000. That was a little bit of a hard hit when, when the, I'll say, the SUV one shouldn't be more than, you know, in that $30,000 to $40,000 range, not 80. So, so then we end up with money, and then it just, I just prefer we work with the money we set aside in the budget and then appropriate, you know, and then that gives staff time. We'll see what money they go through, and they'll know what they'll need, because it'll take time to get the other trucks and that. So that's just my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So if you're going to change that, you'll just offer an amendment to that next week when we have the ordinance?
Correct.
Great. Is there any other conversation or discussion about this tonight? Jeff?
Well, I think because, you know, we've, we at least heard from one member of the community regarding the increase that we brought forward to the vehicle tax. And I'll take the time to go back and review the minutes from that meeting. I have not done that at this point, but I intend to do that, to look at exactly what we discussed in that meeting when that, that was voted on and increased. And, you know, depending upon what the language says, then maybe that is a piece that is something that is a consideration for us. I don't know, I'm speaking for myself, but that would be how I would handle, at least in response to comments that have been shared this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. I agree with that. I think it's, I remember when we did it, it seemed like it had to be done really, really early, and it didn't go into effect until January 1st the next year. So we should check out those deadlines, and then if we did make a change, it's going to be a whole nother year before that would be updated. But we can at least check out those dates. Scott?
The dates are, you have to decide by December of this year, and it takes effect January of '25. It's a two-year process of changing. It took us two years to get it in, takes two years to change it.
Thank you, Scott. I remember that it was a really long time, and so we'll take a look at that. And the danger of changing it at this point is not knowing what the governor is going to do, of course, with the school bond debt in the future. And if we put a thing in to change it, and then the school bond debt doesn't get funded, then we're right back in the same situation. But I have too seen a lot and heard a lot of questions and complaints on social media and phone calls to me about how that happened and how it got so high so fast. I think anyone who's buying a new car, the, even the car dealerships in Anchorage are a little bit shocked at the amount that they have to add to cover Kodiak. So that'll be something we should at least look at. Any other comments on that tonight? Joe?
I just want to say again that I think we should think about nonprofits that we give money to. It has been mentioned that we have over 50% of people living under the poverty level. There are these people that give out the meals and the beds that don't get the funding that they used to get. And I think that we should be doing more of that. Like I said before, when you give money to the needy, it goes right back into the community the next day. So it would be good for us all if we could think about helping those guys out as well. I also don't have a figure in my mind, but by next week, I think I will be closer. But I like the idea of funding it back to the previous levels at least.
Thank you, Joe. I think the interesting part with nonprofit funding is that we have that whole system set up where the nonprofits fill out a form, and then we consider it up to a certain level. And I think that would be a great thing to consider in the next budget cycle, how we want to fund them. Putting it into this money by next week and then trying to figure it out, I think it's going to be really tough at this point. But as we change our focus and we have more money to work with, that's absolutely something that we consider in the next fiscal year cycle. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm thinking out loud, and if I'm out of line, please just, just call me on it. But I, I guess I wonder if there's a way to, you know, we've set up contingency accounts for certain things, and I wonder if there's a way to earmark any of this money as a contingency. If it's a two-year process for us to go back and reexamine the motor vehicle tax, if that takes two years for that to take effect, there's no relief for a community member that's struggling right now, whether to make that choice to register the car or to buy their groceries, or whatever that may be. And I guess I just wonder if there's a way to put aside money that would be something a person could apply for in a hardship situation to help offset that. Just a thought.
Anyone have any comments about Jeff's thoughts? Scott's tongue is bleeding. Jared?
That's a, that's a really interesting idea. I mean, we've done, we've done payments to nonprofits outside of the process. I think we gave the Salvation Army Food Bank some money. I think it might have been like my second or third meeting ever, because we got a little extra money from, it was from the CARES money or something. So we've done that before. So it doesn't seem like it's undoable to set up a, and a fund like that, which I, which is very interesting. I wonder, would we have to partner with a specific nonprofit who would handle the, that kind of application process for us without giving our, you know, our staff a little more work and working out that process? Brother Fransch de Shelter deals a lot with that. KWRCC also helps coordinate some things like that. But, you know, I'm, you know, I, I bought a new car a couple years ago. My wife bought a new car this year. Had to, had to, because the old car broke down. So I, you know, I'm feeling that need for, for relief if it's going to take that long. I like that idea, though. I think there's, there's a nugget there I think we can work with.
James, did you have a comment? Any further comments? Joe?
There, like I said at the last meeting, there is a reason there are people that are needy. There is a reason there are people that are without. And that's when decisions that come up where we can help them, we sometimes don't. I think this is probably not an opportunity that's going to come around very often, but boy, if we could take advantage of it to help some people that need it, I think it would be good. And I like this idea, these guys came up with a contingency fund, so I'll listen more.
Jared?
I do think, though, like, in the interest of, of time, just rolling into the general fund, and then this is something that we can, we can parse out soon, but may, don't necessarily have to parse it out by, by next week.
Thank you, Jared. So it sounds like the fiscal year 2023-02B, the version two, we'll just move that forward how it is, and then Mr. Arndt will make his amendments next week. And then if that's something that we're interested in doing, that'll have to come up probably at the next work session? If that, if people want to bring that forward, please let me know, and we'll work on something for that next meeting. Seeing no other comments on this tonight, we're going to move on to discuss the tsunami workshop that's going to be held in Kodiak. Mr. Conrad?
So James and I have been in contact, mostly James, we'll give him the credit, with Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. They've contacted us. I know Mr. Smiley has spoken with them as well. They'll be down here in March. Do you have the dates? So part of the packet that's in here from like the fourth page back of my manager's report, those are, there's outlines the topics, has who's coming, what the topics are. Basically, Kodiak is kind of their, a kind of a shining star for these folks. This is where a couple of the people, when tsunami mapping first started, Kodiak was the first place where the first maps were turned out. Those same folks, 20 years later, just recreated those maps here last year with, based on new data from earthquakes from recent years and updating the way that pathometry affects, you know, what does the ocean floor look like? How's that affect, you know, your tsunami wave? Which is why we had so many changes. They are also very interested in, and are willing to pay for two people from each of the outlying communities to come in and participate to up the awareness of emergency preparedness. And I'll stop now and let Seema take over if she'd like to.
I was just going to add that we have been in touch with Mr. Johnson, and we are working on the tribal contracts or contact portion of it, while Curtis is working on, with the remote villages themselves. He had asked us to help create awareness with the tribal council, since we have such good contacts with them. And all the information that we have gathered is, was passed on to Curtis. And we typically, every other Friday, get, try and get ahold of Curtis to see if there's any updates or anything else that we need to do. So that is tomorrow. And our involvement has just been to encourage and promote the participation as per instruction from Curtis.
Thank you, Seema and Dave. Are there any questions from the Assembly about this? See, oh, sorry. Yes, Scott?
Sometimes scientists speak over the top of their audience. Do we have any way of trying to understand whether these guys know who they're going to be speaking to?
I actually know some of the folks that are coming down. Amanda, that's working for the city now. She was with DHSEM when I did several of the disasters that I was involved in. There are enough people in this mix that know how to adjust to the audience. Would be my answer.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, thank you, Seema. We'll move on to clerks' comments. No clerks' comments. And on to managers' comments, Dave.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I'm not going to go through a whole lot of this. I will say, of interest to most folks, is that the, we've had some good productive meetings regarding the 717 Egan Way, former mental health building lease. We should have a, we do have a final draft. We'll be sending it to the proposer for their review. They are very interested in moving this along, so I will get with the mayor and the AO and try to get this on the earliest possible meeting. Actually, I'll probably get down on bended knee and have conversation with Nova tomorrow about this, see if we can't slip it in for next week, because I believe it to be that important. We had a very productive negotiation this past week. We met twice this past week, once last week. So I believe that we're, I think we're there. And I think both parties will, it'll be advantageous to both parties as it's, as it is being formulated.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions? Scott?
Dave, is there, how soon might we be able to get a, a copy of that in order to digest it before a meeting?
That will be a conversation that I have with the mayor tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave at this time? All right, we'll move on to packet review. First thing in packet review is our public hearing, which is about the school bond debt reimbursement. And I think we've already covered that enough tonight. And so the other items on there are confirmation of the mayoral and assembly appointments to different boards. Next week, we'll be looking at board appointments to the Archocultural Review Board, the Board of Equalization, Parks and Rec Planning and Zoning, and the Solid Waste Advisory Board. You can see those names as listed in the packet for tonight. Is there any questions about any of those appointments? And then we will be talking about the good cause determination for a senior citizen exemption for Mr. Kyle Crowe, and Seema's here to tell us about that tonight. Thank you, Seema.
So next week, we're going to have a good cause determination hearing. KIBC 3.35030D starts, states in part, "In the event that a claimant fails to apply for a senior exemption as provided by AS 2945030E by January 15th of the assessment year for which the exemption is sought, the Borough Assembly, for good cause shown, may waive the claimant's failure to make a timely application for the exemption for that year." KIBC 3.35030D2 states that "Good cause shall mean extraordinary circumstances beyond the control of the applicant, including but not limited to a medical condition or disability, impaired mental capacity, family emergency, death in the family, or similar serious condition or event that substantially impaired the applicant's ability to file a timely application. Good cause shall not mean late filing due to the applicant's inadvertence, oversight, or lack of knowledge regarding to the filing requirements or deadline, financial hardship, or failure to pick up or read mail, or to make a, sorry, arrangements for an appropriate and responsible person to pick up or read mail." There is a confidential package that was distributed to you by the clerk for the January 19th regular meeting. While we cannot discuss anything about the appellant or the package tonight, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on the procedure or process that we will be following next week.
Are there any questions on procedure tonight for the Assembly or from the Assembly? I don't think there's any. Oh, sorry, Scott?
Something, someplace I read, it said that you don't accept email versions of this application for dispensation. Can we change that?
So we accept faxes. And the reason that we don't accept email is if, if I'm accepting it from your email, you could be out of state or out of town, and I wouldn't know. Where a fax will give me a destination or a phone number that shows that you were in Kodiak when you did it, or out of Kodiak. But that just alerts us to see, okay, we've got to look at the PFD, because this was filed from the Philippines, or this was filed from New Mexico, or Colorado, or something like that, or Hawaii. So, I mean, we do not specifically say that you can, or we say specifically that you cannot email it for that, so that we can see the destination.
Yeah, but I might be wrong, but I thought that faxes were pretty much a dead item anyway. And if that's the case, then...
No. I mean, we haven't had anybody complain about, oh, I, I'll take that back. There was a guy that said, "Oh, I don't know if my fax works, I'll have to dust it off." But we haven't had any, anybody complain about having to fax in. We get lots of people doing it, even from the villages, people fax in quite frequently.
Any other questions about procedure tonight? Thank you very much, Seema. We are now at Assembly Member Comments. We'll start with you, James. Any comments tonight?
No comments.
Joe?
I just recently got a notice that my rent was going to increase. And just before that, I got a notice that my internet fees were going to get higher. The one thing that I didn't get was a letter from my job saying that I'm going to get paid more. So I feel the pain. I know what it's like to wonder, what bill am I going to pay this month? You know? I always hear people complaining about the highest cost of living in 40 years, or whatever, year that all the time. One thing that we don't hear as much about is the profits that the businesses and the corporations are making, which are at a 50-year high. So there's an answer to the problems that we're experiencing right now, but I'm telling you, it sucks having to pay more for the same thing. And in fact, my, my internet service, I was paying for, for the last two And in fact, my, my internet service I was paying for, for the last two years, I was getting about seventy percent of the use. And I called, emailed, and went to the local offices and could never get anything done. They never fixed the price. I paid a full price, even though I didn't get the full use of the thing. And now that we're finally gonna have full use of our internet, they're gonna raise the price. It just sucks. That's it for tonight.
Jeff?
I think I'll just take the opportunity to repeat myself. I, as a member of this community, have had it with litter, and I've had it with the disposal of large items in areas that we all like to frequent and visitors to our island wanna go to. And I think that's, this is a community problem, and I think every member of our community needs to take a deep look at how we're acting, how we're behaving, and what we're doing, and take responsibility for our own, our own debris in a way that doesn't impact the rest of the island. And, and I'm, I as one will support anything coming out of staff that will increase the enforcement of putting a stop to what's been happening.
Thank you, Jeff. Jared?
None from me.
Scott?
No comment.
Other Scott?
No comment.
Just wanted to real quick let everyone know that the offices here at the Kodiak Island Row will be closed on January sixteenth for observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. On January eighteenth, we will be holding a joint work session with the City of Kodiak City Council that'll be held at six thirty PM in the Kodiak Public Library, and our next regular meeting will be January nineteenth, right here in the Assembly Chambers. Directly after this work session, we will be having a special meeting that will go into executive session, but for right now, this meeting is adjourned.